And you're good.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. If I may give rise, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott, if you can call the board?
Mrs. Albre.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Here.
Mr. Jared.
Here.
Mrs. Leonie.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here. Mr. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Thank you. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Cooper for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a report to the Board that our preparations continue for our district building rightsizing for the 2022-2023 implementation. As the professional staff transfer conversations have happened and followers have been provided to professional staff, we've posted some staff vacancies for the 2022-2023 school year as a retirement, as a result of the retirements and resignations. So we have begun that process for replacing our professional staff who have moved on. A reminder for the Board that we have a budget workshop that's scheduled for Tuesday, March 8th at 6:30 p.m. right here. Future readiness index data will be released for public review some point this week. The district's got a preliminary preview at the end of last week of that data. That is to be released, and the specific district data will be shared at our March Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting on March 28th. Thursday, March 17th, from 8 to 2 p.m. is Unity Day at our high school in the Annex Gym. I'm inviting the Board members to attend any segment of the event as my guest. In the event, if you are interested in stopping by to review the work related to diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging that our students are doing, please let me know a time that you intend to stop by, and I will make note on my calendar. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Moving on to procedures for public participation. So, I see a lot of new faces here, so I'll bring them out. Prepared statements that are to be read to the Board should have a copy presented to the Board President prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the Board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments, will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And I will add a personal comment that, you know, we've had a lot of folks coming in to give their comments to be heard, which I do encourage, but this is not, that is meant to be a time for you to address us with your concerns. It's not a question-and-answer period, so you're not going to be getting direct answers from the Board at this time. If there are any direct questions that are asked, we post them on the website later in the week. So, having said that, presentations by the public on agenda items. Are there any? All right, seeing none. Moving on. Two announcements. Agenda edits, if any. I don't think we have any.
We do not.
We do not. There will be an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss potential litigation. We have consent items. Consent items 3A1 through, 1 through 12, omitting number nine. Can I get a motion for those? So that would be, make that motion as I stated it. Can we get a second?
A second.
Ms. Thompson, any discussion of those items from the Board? We discussed them at least briefly last week. Anything? Can we get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay. Can I get a motion for 3A, number nine?
Motion.
Ms. Bell, can I get a second for Ms. Godfrey? I have to state this for the record. The reason we're voting on this one separately is because it is my donation to the school district, so I have to abstain. And so, any discussion? Can I get a vote?
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Jared. Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
And Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
And I will abstain. Okay. All right, thanks, everybody. Moving on to personnel consent items, 4A1 through 3 inclusive. Can I get a motion for those?
Motion.
Ms. Albre, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Jared. And any comments, questions, concerns from the Board on personnel consent? Okay, can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, under finance added consent, 5A1 through 5.
Can we, 2 through 5?
2 through 5.
Oh, of course, okay. So 5, 5A2 through 5, can we get a motion for those? Ms. Thompson? Or Ms. Godfrey?
Commandant.
Oh, then Ms. Godfrey. Ms. Thompson was first, Ms. Godfrey second. Any comments, questions, concerns for anybody for the stuff under this one? One thing I will comment on, the, it was just discussed in finance today, that the center stage lighting contract to repair and replace items in the school auditorium, it is being done through, what is the method that?
CoStar.
We use CoStar to find that bid, but the items in question are, were deemed necessary by our insurance because they weren't up to code. So we did do, we went through CoStar, which allowed us to do just the one bid because they're an approved bidder. And I just wanted to point that out. Does anybody have any questions on that or anything else, 2 through 5? Can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson.
Yes. And under finance added consent, can I get a motion for 5A1?
Motion.
Ms. Ms. Albre. Mr. Strobel first, Ms. Albre second.
Mrs. Albre, yes.
And.
Not really.
And I'm assuming that we're doing this because this is a donation to the Monk Trial Student Activity Fund from Tanya Bell. Yes.
She's going to abstain.
Yeah, and she's going to abstain. So any comments, questions, concerns from the Board on that donation? Thank you very much. Can we get a vote?
Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Okay. And finance added consent? Personnel added consent, 6A1 through 5. Can I get a vote? Can I get a motion for those?
I'll make that first.
Mr. Scott, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Strobel. Comments, questions, concerns from the Board? Okay, can I get a vote?
Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson.
Yes. All right, where are we now? Old business. Old business, 7A1 and 2. Can I
get a motion for those?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Ms. Leonie. So, just to point out that, I don't know if anybody remembers, when we had the presentation of the January enrollment numbers at the committee of the whole, there was a tallying issue in one of the spreadsheets. And so, this information was presented before, but now it's been corrected, and that's what's attached to this agenda. Any comments, questions, concern from the Board? Can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to new business, 8A1. Can I get a motion for those, and we can open that up for discussion?
I'll motion.
Ms. Thompson, can I get a second?
I'll make it.
It's listed as a discussion item.
Oh, okay. All right. So we don't need to do all that. We might come back to that. So we're going to have a discussion. We talked last, just to bring everybody up to speed, last meeting, we were just starting to see numbers tick down in the school district and in the county as a whole for COVID-positive numbers. And Ms. Leonie had brought it up that she would really like to have a discussion about making some changes to the Health and Safety Plan to remove the requirement for contact tracing after someone has been found positive. So, and I had asked if we could put it on the agenda, discuss this meeting because it'll be three weeks later, to see if the drop in cases was really just a blip, or if it was showing like a real, a real change in the number of positive cases we have. It's so, I mean, so far, it seems like our numbers are matching this county and as is the country, where the numbers are decreasing rapidly. I think our last week from up till Thursday, which was last time we had any school instruction, we had six cases. Is that right?
That's right.
So.
I thought it was four. Six.
Six.
It was reported.
So, we can start at one end and go to the next, or if anybody wants to start the discussion going about whether or not we want to remove contact tracing, and start at one end and go to, I'm going to start with you. Go ahead.
I feel comfortable at this point eliminating the contact tracing.
I've always felt comfortable.
I understand. I understand.
I'm fine with it, Julie.
I'm good. They could go with.
And, yep, yep. All right, so.
Julie, can I ask something else since we're talking about the Health and Safety Plan? So, under the universal correct mask-wearing of masks, some of that information is kind of outdated because the CDC and their Title 42, Section 361 just got rid of that, so.
Right.
And then the district will follow all Pennsylvania Department of Health mandates in regards to masking. That was found by courts being unconstitutional, so.
Correct. We left it in there, the language, in case one came back. But, you know, because it just says that we will follow them if they exist, which they don't, so now there isn't. We aren't following it, if that makes sense. We left the language in because.
I just saw like the word movement language is the mandate, which I can go back to the mandate because it's unconstitutional.
Didn't we have P.O. on issues and we weren't going to follow that, and we stopped with the U.D. and this other thing? So whether it's constitutional or not, we were going to debate that legal case here at this forum. We were going to go with it, and if it became unconstitutional, then it's the court, Julie.
I'm going to defer to the man with the finger on the button there, Mr. Subers.
The prior order, the August 30th order, the Secretary of Health was not determined to be unconstitutional. It was determined to have been enacted in violation of applicable laws, specifically the Regulatory Review Act and the Pennsylvania Documents Law. And so, the court didn't opine on the merits, it didn't opine on the constitutionality. What it did, what the court said was, you did it the wrong way. So it leaves, it left the Supreme Court decision, and even the underlying Commonwealth Court decision left the door open for the Department of Health to redo it. And they actually even informed them how to redo it, but they chose not to. So there is no, there is no existing valid order. One, in theory, could come back, but I mean, certainly due to recent developments, you wouldn't expect that to be happening.
But this says that we will follow, so can we change the wording to "may"?
If you choose, you can.
Because this is basically saying, if there is one, no matter what, we are going to follow it. That's the problem I have with the wording of it.
Is it an order? Does it say?
It says we'll follow mandates, mandates.
Of mandates.
That's right, "may," and then a little.
It's the wording of it that I don't like.
I think for now, we could, well, if it is a properly enacted Department of Health mandate, you would be obligated to follow it.
Right. So I'm just asking to change the wording instead of "will follow all," that "shall" or "may."
Well, you can say "shall follow" any properly enacted mandate of the Pennsylvania Department of Health.
I just don't, I don't know if it substantively changes the meaning of what we would do. Because what you're saying is, I mean, if you're saying "may," that's leaving the option open that if there was a proper, a proper, properly disseminated mandate that we wouldn't follow it, which I don't necessarily think I want in writing, that that's what we would do, you know? I mean, the fact, the fact is that there's a really good chance that it's all a non-issue from here on in, but.
But if things change, that thing "may" is giving us that option. It doesn't mean we have to do it.
But I thought that, I thought that we had, the fact, the fact that we, yeah, go ahead.
If it says a mandate, right, we're saying a mandate. It's not a recommendation. See, like, for instance, the difference is the CDC was making recommendations. If the Pennsylvania Department of Health enacted properly a mandate, a mandate means you have to do it.
Yeah. Wouldn't we agree with it or not?
Right.
Correct.
Maybe I said that wrong. That's what I did.
So, and again, the likelihood of that happening, we don't anticipate that happening.
Right.
It may not happen. It could just be a law.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah. I was, I was not prepared to make that change today. I mean.
What about the other portion of that?
What other portion?
In regards to the Title 42, Section 361?
It's the CDC.
That's.
Obviously, because we just changed that, so.
The CDC on bus?
Yeah, they just changed it.
That was changed, well, what they did is they announced that they no longer be enforcing it effective February 25th. They still have to take the formal action to rescind the order, which they've indicated they will do, but as of February 25th, it's no longer being enforced, so we can remove it, if you want to remove it.
Right. It's, and, you know, if there, if it's no longer.
Being enforced.
Being enforced, removing it, not removing it, I don't know if it makes that much of a difference. But I don't see any reason why we couldn't remove it. I don't see.
Correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. We've already, we've already, we've already made the change to how we enforce mask-wearing on the bus. It's optional at this point? Is that correct, as of this morning?
Yes, we sent correspondence out this morning.
But it's as of the 25th, February.
Yeah, they sent that notice out to us at 5:00 p.m.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but it wasn't, it's been.
Yeah, 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 so.
So if the Board were considering to take Board action this evening, we would have to make the motion to amend.
Yep.
Your agenda. You would have to state a reason why you were amending the agenda this evening. And you could say because of the recent developments, including the CDC action on February 25th. And you would have to vote, the majority would have to vote to amend the agenda. You would then open it up to public comment, and then you would vote on the new agenda.
I have a question. Mrs., today we're going to vote on whether or not we're going to make it, the mask mandate's already been lifted. We're not.
Correct.
We're not going to wear masks now. So tonight, we're voting on, the first piece of it was.
Contact tracing.
That's, that's, that's the only thing that would actually change the way we implement our health and safety plan.
If we can do that today, easy, make a vote, we're done. This here is on our health and policy. Can we take, since there's no action being taken, there's no mandate, so I could put in there that we're all going to stand on our head if they have a mandate. There's no mandate, we're not going to have to stand on our head.
Correct.
Why don't we take the time, make the change properly, discuss it properly, not have to make all these lame, you know, vote on this.
Yeah, well, we'll still have to do that for, to vote on contact tracing, but to just do the one thing.
Do the one thing at one time, and then take the time to do that in the right, in the right way. There's no mandate. There's nothing going to force any of those amendments.
Jared.
For what it's worth.
We're not going to make any changes. And that's not what we were following necessarily anyway.
Right.
It was really the governor's mandate that was following it.
So, would, Ms. Leonie, would you, would you be amenable to us making that change at the next board meeting, that other, the other change that doesn't substantively change the way we?
Is there something that's going to change in that side?
We still have to vote to make any change, even if change is anonymous.
I don't know. I don't believe so.
Make whatever you.
But I don't know. Do you have any concerns?
No, I wasn't asking. I was just asking time. He said time, and I said time for what?
Taking a look at the difference, like, the verbiage, what kind of verbiage is there, you know, what this, the difference between, we could argue the word "is," we saw that.
Oh, no, I was talking about.
Versus "shall," versus "may," you know, those types of things. I'd have the time to do some research on it. I've done zero.
I thought we were talking about. I thought we were talking about Title 42, Section 361.
I thought we were talking about this one right here.
No, yeah, with the transportation, right?
That's.
Do they still have to wear a robust?
The two.
No.
As of the 25th.
So the two things that we were discussing possibly making a motion to amend today would be to remove our requirements for contact tracing and to remove the verbiage, remove the verbiage having to do with the transportation requirement for masking. Those were the two things, so.
If we don't remove it, do they have to wear the masks?
No.
No.
No, that's often changed, that is, this morning.
I'm good.
So it's not, really a non-issue.
So do I, so, so to do this, we got to go through some, so, please bear with us while we go through, like, some Roberts Rules of Order, Roberts Rules of Order required gymnastics to have this vote, so.
So, what you would be.
We're going to first vote to amend the agenda, right?
It would be a motion to amend the agenda, to include an action item, to revise the Health and Safety Plan, to remove the contact.
Contact tracing.
Tracing requirement, and remove the transportation mask mandate.
Right. So.
I need to write that down?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how I missed it.
So, we have, so, we have to, we have to vote in order to amend the agenda as it was provided to the public last week, to make an amendment to add an item 8A2, to revise our Health and Safety Plan, to remove the requirement for contact tracing, and to remove the language pertaining to transportation mask, masking requirement. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Ms. Albre and Ms. Leonie. Any discussion before we make that up?
And I would just note that the recent.
Oh, I apologize.
The reasoning is because of the very, the recent announcement by the CDC on Friday that the amending on transportation would no more be enforced, and the widely acknowledged difficulty and potential lack of utility of contact tracing that been recognized throughout the Commonwealth. So there are the reasons why we would be taking that action to that.
After, you know, having that clarification, any comments, questions before we vote on making the agenda edit? Can we have a vote on making the agenda edit?
Mrs. Albre.
Yes.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jared.
Yes.
Mrs. Leonie.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, so, under new business, 8A2, do I have a motion to vote for said item that I'm not going to repeat again?
Motion.
Mr. Jared, do I have a second? Ms. Thompson, we did a lot of our discussion under 8A1, but if we have any more discussion before we vote?
Well, I think we should open it up to public.
Oh, that's right. I apologize. This is, yeah, this was not on the agenda at the beginning, so if anybody has any comments for us before we, before we vote, you're free to come up to the, come up to the podium on this item.
I just want to be clear, this is in regard to what you guys discussed, like, the wording of the agenda item that added, right?
Okay.
According to U.S. Code 49, subtitle 3, chapter 53, section 5302, public transportation, public transportation means regular continuing shared ride service, transportation services that are open to the public and open to a segment of the general public defined by age, disability, low income, does not include intercity passenger rail transportation provided by the entity described in chapter 243 or the successor to such entity. Section 2, it does not include intercity bus service, charter bus service, school bus service, sightseeing service, courtesy shovel service. It's just something to keep in mind, that technically school buses are not considered public transportation. Just move the vote.
Move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any?
I just have to say, please, Jesus, thank you, other one further, thank you. That's all?
That's it.
Not more than. On this, on this call, thank you.
I'm taking that 10 seconds off your other three minutes.
Anyone else have any comments? Any, any further discussion from the Board before we vote? Mr. Scott, can I get a vote?
Mrs. Aubrey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jerick?
Yes.
Mrs. Leone?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
All right, moving on to presentations by the public on any issues. See, okay.
Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. So my name is Breonna Lee. I am a senior at Daniel Boone Area High School. I'm here today alongside some of my friends here to share my experiences of racism in this school district. Earlier this school year, there was a personal experience where I was walking outside of my study hall alongside one of my closest friends. Both my friend and I are Asian, and as we were chatting in the school hallway, my friend was able to hear someone say, hey, let me go pull up my mask. I don't, I don't want to get the Kung Flu virus. This is very offensive as it perpetuates the idea that Asians are responsible for the coronavirus. I have lived in my, in the Daniel Boone Area School District for my whole life. I was born here and I was raised via Blazer. How am I supposed to proudly represent my school when there are so many more instances of racism that happen in my district? There are so many incidents of racism that casually happen, and unfortunately, nothing can be done about it because it happens so quickly without others realizing it. In my particular situation, I did not realize that it happened until after my conversation was over. I could not report it because I did not know the individual in the hallway. Although this is only one example of what I have gone through, it is important for me to emphasize that I am not the only person who has been affected by racism, microaggressions, stereotypes, unrealistic standards, and so much more in this school district. I am unfortunately, it's shameful that I have to look back at my 13 years at Daniel Boone, and at times I can only remember what it's like to be mocked for my race, ethnicity, and culture. In particular, it has been very disturbing to see black classmates of mine this week being racially targeted for the color of their skin. There are some students in my school who unfortunately think that it's acceptable to jokingly say racial slurs that directly harm black students and impact the generational trauma that they went through. I wish my speech here today was about anything but racism. However, it's important for me to speak up for students of color and use my voice to advocate for what needs to change. I know personally that we can do so much better as a community and as a school district. In my 13 years, there have been moments when I have witnessed our school district come together and for so many efforts that have been amazing for its community. I want to personally be able to graduate and look back at positive moments of my time at Daniel Boone because I know that we are so capable of so much more, and I know that we have the potential to tackle issues such as racism in our school district. There are other students here with me today at the school board meeting who are also talking about their experiences with racism. Please listen to their stories and hear about the message that they have to tell. They are so powerful for sharing their stories, and they are currently fighting alongside with me to uplift students of color who are currently struggling with the racism in our school district. We are here today to fight for a better future at Boone and to amplify, amplify the voices of students of color who attend the Daniel Boone Area School District. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm sorry, please excuse my attire. I'm coming from indoor color guard practice. My name is Denise Jean. I'm a student here at Daniel Boone High School. I also came to talk about my experiences with racism. I've been a student here since 2016, and this school actually has opened up a lot of opportunities for me. We have like the most AP classes. We have a really good music program. I'm able to participate in indoor color guard. But I find myself representing our school when I don't feel like the school is representing me, if you understand what I'm saying. I come into school every day. I'm currently not really, I'm currently not even attending classes here because I'm attending classes at a hospitalization program, and still I come here and I do my activities and I do my commitments that I signed up for in public, representing our school. And every day I go home and I have to listen to, Daniel Boone is racist. All the students there are racist. And it's really frustrating for me because as much as I want to say, hey, my school's not racist. My school knows better. My school teaches their students how to be good. I can't say that with a good conscience. I'm not saying you're teaching students to directly be racist, but my problem is that when we have these issues with, you know, students might have different opinions, and they might say things. They might not understand that they're harmful to say, or they may understand that they're harmful to say. I feel as though these issues are being swept under the bus. I understand that there's not much you can do in terms of punishment because it all comes down to, like, what can you really do? You know what I mean? But I feel like when a student comes out and like they, on social media all the time it happens. Someone says something racist, and then they're suspended, but they're suspended for their safety. They're not suspended because they were being harmful. They're not suspended because someone else is feeling hurt by their comments. They're suspended because of the fear that you guys have for that student because they, you guys fear that we, black people, are going to hurt them. And that's not the case. I just wish that instead of suspending for safety, we suspend it for punishment, or there was some, like, you know, something more that we could offer to our students of color to make them feel safe and to make me feel like it's worth representing this school. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Are we doing public comment for anything, or we just?
Yep.
Can we just, oh, okay, I wasn't sure if we were just doing public comment.
I apologize. Okay. At the be, um.
For the vote that was going to take place.
Yeah, give me, give me one, one second before you start speaking, ma'am, at the, at the podium. The begin, at the beginning of the board meeting, it's any item up for vote, any item on the agenda. At the end, it's on any item that you wish to speak on. Okay, so we're there.
We're at the end now, okay.
All right, I apologize. Go right ahead.
Good evening. I am Dani Ha, a senior at Daniel Boone Area High School. I live at 50146 Central, Pennsylvania. As an Asian person that goes to Boone, I can't say my experience was all too positive. As a kid growing up, I've heard numerous jobs thrown at me from other students regarding my name, ethnicity, culture, and race. Things like, you know your middle name means something else, right? How can you see out of your eyes? You're only smart because you're Asian. You're not a part of the Vietcom, are you? And I've also been called the G slur and the C slur. Honestly, that doesn't even begin to detail what has been said to me. Mind you, these comments all took place in a school, a place that is meant to foster and guide children to be the best versions of themselves. As a young and precious kid growing up, these statements began to terrorize me. I hated my arms, my skin, my culture. I loved every single part of it, and it took me years to unlearn that hatred, and I'm still coming to terms with it. What is sad is that other students here have experienced things on a worse scale, a more violent scale, and I will be blunt, black students have experienced the worst of racism at the school. And it frustrates me to see my peers being targeted and mocked for their appearance and their race, people making use of the N slur and making jokes out of their generational trauma and youthful history. Black students deserve respect and human compassion, but the education system failed them and failed to properly teach white students what is right and what is wrong. Racism has been rampant within this school district for too long. This consequence, the consequences this school gives out are not severe enough, and very rare are racist students held accountable. Even once students come back from suspension, they still continue to incite racist actions and perpetuate racist rhetoric. They never truly learn the harm they inflict on black students and students of color. I call upon the school board and administrative, administrative staff to take preventative measures to make sure that black students and students of color don't experience and suffer from any more racial trauma. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Heather Lee, and I live at 276 Buckland Lane, Douglas, PA. I've lived here all my life, and as a black student, maybe that means I've had my fair share of racism in this community. Ever since I was a kid, I've had people call me names, chocolate, Amati, Amat, G slur, and among other things. I've received backfired comments, which is my parents, they're so much better straight, they actually spend less time in the sun. And people thought I would steal from them personally, or that I would get violent with them, or that I would just play on stupid. All of these comments with, that I've mentioned have happened within the school district, whether that was in the high school, within the school, or evenly elementary school. And for a time, I believed all these things. I believed that I was some sort of monster that people were scared of, and that I wasn't as jolly as everyone else. I did believe in myself because of what other people taught me. I sold myself short of opportunities I could have had because of people not believing in me, that I could do it. I hated the way I looked, the way my hair curled, the way the shape of my lips, and the color of my skin. The worst part of it all is that people share my experiences of this. I know I'm not alone. And that so many white people, people of color, like myself, struggle with these stereotypes and racism. These stereotypes are harmful because they push unfair and biased ideas on people and prevent them from, sorry, prevent them from opportunities and relationships. These kind of ideas in speech media can be stopped. Stuff like this is shown in the media and in books. We really want to keep pushing this message to our kids, especially in the younger, younger schools. There are students in this school who have spread racist speech in media and have not been appropriately punished. It is incredibly difficult to break people out of these mindsets, especially at our age. And a few days of suspension will not change that. I hope that one day people of color in this community will live without the fear of racism and these stereotypes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Like many of my peers that are currently here, I have been a student at Daniel Boone School District for all 13 years of my educational career. Within those 13 years, I have attended all these school buildings, which, fun fact, includes the former A T C and A B C. However, one thing that I always have and always will remember is the lack of comfort that I felt in each building and the amount of discrimination that remains to be troubled by in this school. As an Asian American student here at Boone, I have unfortunately faced my fair share of racism. I won't head into anything too specific, but let me tell you all right now that that feeling of getting outcast for looking different, being held to higher standards than your peers, or even getting racist remarks because someone thinks you caused this whole pandemic, was and is so frustrating and exhausting, especially to someone who's just trying to get their education. The sheer amount of racial discrimination and racist rhetoric being thrown around, especially towards black students, is simply disgusting. And what's more disgusting is the fact that those students who are being racist and discriminatory barely get recommended to do themselves. It hurts as students of color to see these people get away scot-free while we still have to go to school and worry about the next slur that'll get thrown out or the next microaggression that will be said behind that back. It's unfair. It's unfair to Hispanic and Latino students who already have it quite so hard to be accepted and treated accordingly. It's unfair to Asian students who have been subjected to the model minority myth in which cultures have been oppressed constantly. It's unfair to black students whose culture has been ridiculed and stigmatized, going to then be stolen by non-Black folk. It is unfair to students who are part of marginalized communities who have to find the motivation to go to school only to then be treated as lesser people by their own peers. Daniel Boone is supposed to foster a safe, diverse, and growing learning environment, but it pains me to say that that is not something that I experienced here at the high school and in the middle school and elementary. It's disappointing, it is frustrating, and it is simply exhausting. I want the administration to take action by uplifting the voices of students of color, and especially black students who took recent events. Take accountability and hold others accountable. I want this district to make their schools into more accepting and non-discriminatory environments for the younger generation. Not now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mic, mic's open.
She's got a frequent wire number.
Okay, my name is Lisa White, and yeah, that's why I was just asking if it was open mic.
Yep, you're good.
I wasn't sure if we were doing this agenda, or that I don't want to jump in.
Yep, you're good.
Out, out, out of line there, but I, I just wanted to note, as, as we're hearing about, you know, racism, and I'm sure this is something that you're going to be looking at how to resolve moving forward. But I, I wanted to note that, you know, this is a predominantly, I guess, a predominantly white school apparently, you know, and, and it, the target always, it just seems like it's, it's, it's whites against all these ethnic groups. And I just want to note that, you know, when I grew up, you know, it was a predominantly black school. And, and as a white person, I was attacked, or, you know, the whites were attacked. And, and so racism isn't, you know, as everyone wants, wants to point to a particular group and say, you know, oh, it's this group, or it's that group that's causing the, causing the issues. It, it's not just whites versus every other ethnic out there, you know, because when, when you're, you know, a, a white person and you're, you're, you're jumping into another type of culture, then you become attacked. You know, that person becomes attacked, and I've witnessed it over and over and over and over again. Go down to Reading at night time, you know, you know, you just don't go down, and they tell you a white person leave, you know, because now you're in a whole another group of, of, of people. So, you know, I, I guess I just wanted to note that because it isn't just a particular group that's bullying over all the other groups. This is, this problem is beyond the nationality or the, or the ethnic background. It's, there, there's a moral problem. So as, as you're resolving this issue, I, I just didn't want it to come out to like, you know, CRT, you know, white person's the bad person, and all these four, you know, other people. It's not that because when I'm, when I'm the minority in, in other areas, you know, I'm the one that's becoming under assault. And I've had it over and over and over again, cracker, or, you know, all these other, you know, slurs that are derogatory to white people. So I just wanted to note that and, and, and put that out there that, you know, that this is, this is a morality problem. This is, this is a morality problem. This, this isn't of, 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 of black versus Hispanic versus, versus white. There, there is a morality problem going on. We all need to get together. We all need to, to, to respect one another. And I just don't want any kind of new type of curriculum that's going to come out, or, you know, as you're looking at how to resolve this, you know, there's targeting that, oh, there's this one group that's causing all the problems. It, it's not, it's, you know, no matter where you go, if you're the minority, it, it seems to be a problem, and it's more of a morality problem in my mind. So thanks.
Thank you.
I'm not just going to yell out because personally.
I'm, I'm, I'm fast forwarding.
I want to talk about racism just because I know what it is. To me, I, I hate, I don't think people should go past the corner. Where I lived before, I think that that was still, I sent my daughter to, my daughters to school, and they were the minority. Now, my younger daughters didn't have a problem because at a really, really young age, you know, kids don't look at that kind of stuff. But as my eldest went to school, they would, again, I shouldn't, you know, she was the minority. Children would take her, go in her lunchbox and steal her snacks every single day. They would tell her that it's, that she has why, and she was no longer there, they had the keys in there. They would tell her it's her mom's fault for packing her good snacks. They would make fun of her edges. I don't have a clue what the heck that means, something with hair. Edges? I have no idea. She had man edges. That's what she was told. She had bad edges, that's what she was told. They would let her play games because they, kids are kids, that's on both sides of the thing. They would play Black Panther, and she was allowed to play Black Panther because of her skin color. The worst part of it was, is that when they had birthday parties, there was two different children. My daughter was one of them. They would pass out cupcakes, and her and the other child were excluded from having cupcakes. They weren't allowed cupcakes because they didn't provide cupcakes for children of not the same ethnicity or color. Another incident happened where, this did happen with my younger child, that my daughter, who, I have mixed children now, she wanted to hang out on a playdate, and it's my wife, they go to a playdate, and she said, "Absolutely give the little girl's mom my phone number." And the little girl gave, my daughter gave the little girl her phone number, and threw it out and said, "We don't hang out with white people." That's my baby, but not my wife, my children are mixed. I'm just saying, those sides of racism, I'm not called Daniel Boone, I'm like, this thing happened, it's just people that choose language or words. And they see these things on television shows, and the music that they listen to. That's where they're getting from, that's where they're being brainwashed by the stuff that these children are watching on school, watching on TikTok, all this Facebook and everything else. So that's where they're being taught this heat, which is always in their face, and with cell phones being constantly in their face, they never get away with it. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The parents, the folks who always attend here, we're committed to, over a period of a couple of months, to educate the board regarding the American Marxism that is currently tied to the American culture in the name of freedom, justice, and emancipation. With the constant use of showcase marginalized people, we have found their abuse to be in this unending cycle used to promote an agenda. We will expose the evil that has embedded itself within the educational system in the name of justice that is in fact doing the complete opposite. Many of us have had conversations with principals, Rob Flowers was here, communications with parents, students, staff, find that the lack of basic understanding of American Marxism is perhaps the assault on the education system in this state of PA. The package of regression and segregation has been painted to look wholesome and have the appearance of activism and justice. We will be breaking down the concept of critical theory, Marxism, and the marriage of philosophy and biological social studies that is embedded within our school district. We ask that you please pay attention and not write us off. If materials are handed to you, please read over the documents. Many of us have spent a lot of time researching, have sat in meetings, personally interviewed folks for all the sake of our children's future. Today's topic is critical theory. Per Amherst College, Karl Marx and Friedrich Engels amalgamate the basis of their theory communism. Critical theory is distinctive aim to unmask ideology falsely justifying some form of social or economic oppression to reveal it as ideology, and in doing so, to contribute to the task of ending that oppression. And so, a critical theory aims to provide a kind of enlightenment about social and economic life that is itself emancipatory. Person comes to realize and recognize the oppression they are suffering as oppression, and are thereby partly freed from it. Any process of change, reform, or from Marx's revolution requires first, that people come to see capitalism for what it is, for they must see first the ways in which they themselves are alienated, powerless, and exploited before they can try to free themselves from it. And particular forms of oppression distinctive of late capitalism are importantly different from the forms Marx found in early capitalism. This ideology has been uncovered in the literature shared within Daniel Boone School District, which I personally met with James Towers about, which inherently is tied to the COVID funding and perhaps the hiring of Rob Flowers. Freckle is the system that was purchased using the COVID funding, and it is an art-proofed system that was purchased with COVID funding and distributed to the children in Daniel Boone School District. Critical theory is indeed here, even though it's not embedded in your curriculum. The board agreed to this when they took measures to ensure COVID funding. This is why it is important to redefine print. What does COVID have to do with American Marxism being taught in our school district? Marxism is responsible for killing over 100 million people in the last century. Why are we teaching our kids this ideology and using marginalized people to push this? It's the opinion of racism and indoctrination.
Thank you.
Rachel Markle, Birdsboro, Earl Street, Birdsboro. Critical theory creates categories of the oppressors and the oppressed, and underpins identity politics. It seeks to solve concerns about racial inequality, but instead of solving problems, it creates new ones. CRT promotes a belief that America is a fundamentally racist country and that all of our institutions are designed to maintain white supremacy. Critical theory sees every human relationship in terms of a race-based power struggle. It sees institutions like law, education, and business as the main source of racial problems. Critical theory rejects individual freedom and personal responsibility. It divides people into racial groups, pits the groups against each other, and judges guilt or innocence based on race. This threatens the best ideals of the American founding. "We are the land of the free with unlimited opportunity." "We fight toxic ideologies by sharing the truth and promoting opportunities that allow everyone to pursue the American dream." That is cited by the Heritage Foundation. Marx believed that all phases of history that has been in conflict between two dominant classes of society. In antiquity's slave society, the conflict was between free citizen and slave. In the feudal society of the Middle Ages, it was between feudal lord and serf. Later on, between aristocrat and citizen. But in Marx's own time, in what he called a war, what, I forgot his word to our seat, thank you, or capitalist society, the conflict was first and foremost between the capitalists and the workers. And this is from Sophie's World, it's a book about philosophers. So that's the point I wanted to say right tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caroline Decray from Douglasville, PA. When parents were told that critical race theory is not being taught in schools or being misdirected, critical theory is being redefined and hijacked as social emotional learning. These theories are not part of the state's standards, but the language of the theory is prepped into our children's curriculum. Our children have come home and had numerous discussions with us regarding words in lessons and words on posters that they find weird or confusing. We've remained silent on the subject matter up until now because we're seeing a real uptick in the rhetoric when it comes to critical theory. We've seen over the last decade educators, politicians, and the media push the theory that white men and everything Western civilization built is racist, and that capitalism is inherently racist. Children are being taught to see differences. I learned at the roundtable that if I say I'm colorblind, or that I don't raise my kids to judge based on color, skin, religious beliefs, or orientation, it's now considered a microaggression. I watched a video where a woman was speaking, she was African-American, and she stated she was oppressed growing up as a person of color, even though in her very next sentence, she spoke of going to boarding school. I think boarding school is a huge privilege. I learned during the roundtable that Mr. Flowers visits our schools and meets with our children and points out their differences. This is dividing and very confusing. I learned words like spirit murdering, and a lot of other really negative words that they are teaching my children about race and differences. Using negativity to teach is disturbing. Certain words were repeated over and over again, and I don't know if you know this, but that's a form of brainwashing. When one parent dared to question the thought process of the roundtable, she was shut down. She was told that she could meet or discuss privately her issues. That was not an open forum. We found the roundtable to be very descriptive, very scripted, offensive, sometimes negative, condescending, and dividing. I've been told that the school is hiding SEL books from parents, and they're conducting surveys about parents' knowledge. This doesn't sit well with us because it usually means there's something to hide. I'd like to know if that's true. I've never experienced white privileges myself. I resent the indication that my children, because they are white, they have more privilege than other children. I came from a very poor background, and I was not able to go to college because I couldn't check boxes for grants, and I didn't have great Skid scholarships. My skin color did not help me advance in any way. I'm successful despite not having a college degree, and I make no excuses. I'm not weak, I'm determined, and I never played victim. There are lessons that we should be teaching our kids. My husband and I provided more for our four children than we ever had growing up. We're both very proud, and no one can tell us that because we are white, we had it easy. I'm proud to say that I could put three square meals on the table for my kids, because sometimes I only had one meal growing up. We've taught our three girls and our son that they can be anything they want. My oldest is a sergeant in the army. My second is an RN. My third's graduating this year, she has been accepted to be enrolled in the restaurant school, and we've become a chef. They're all DB kids. They're not racist. They love their fellow students. And they're having a hard time accepting that this school is racist.
Thank you.
First, I want to say it's great to see everybody's face, but proof. Follow up after my wife, my name is Jim Decray, and we live in Douglasville. We do appreciate how hard the school board, the teachers, work for our district. We respectfully request that you please investigate SEL in more detail. Please research who is funding and running the program, you'll be surprised. The new version of SEL does not belong here at DB. We can do better for our kids. Mr. Flowers can be an asset to our schools. He's respected and loved by the DB kids currently attending DB, as well as kids who have graduated. The kids are comfortable talking to him, and they trust him. Mr. Flowers can be a very positive person in the children's lives, but not by using SEL, proof. Parents were forced to wake up during the pandemic for many reasons. We are taking back control of our schools, towns, states, and countries. Our grassroots movement has a lot of momentum throughout the US. We are proud to be on the front line standing up for our children. The government should never mess with our kids, our kids are our everything, proof. It's recently brought to my attention that a complaint was filed with the US Department of Education against the Daniel Boone Area School District about alleged racism that was experienced. Upon reading the articles in the Pottstown Mercury, I was appalled to find out the extent of the inappropriate language and behavior that is allegedly occurring in the school district. I wholeheartedly agree that every student should feel safe at school and should not be concerned about what harassment or bullying they might receive at the hands of their classmates, teachers, or administration. My wife and I sat on the Equity Roundtable this past week, and we were interested in what this program was about. We believe and have taught our children that all people are equal and should be treated that way regardless of their race, gender, or religion. We both grew up right outside the Philadelphia city limits in a very diverse neighborhood in the 70s and 80s. We both went to school with a multitude of nationalities and religions. In our schools, they emphasized our similarities and not our differences. We all worked and played together, and there were not many instances of racism. When an instance would happen, the administration was quick to address the situation and make it known that it was not acceptable. From reading the articles in the Pottstown Mercury that have apparently has not been done here in the past with Daniel Boone, for what is stated in the articles is true, this does need to be resolved. It seems like the equity awareness, equity awareness in community relations is a reaction to the complaint that was filed. However, we cannot allow the pendulum to swing the other way and start to blame or bully non-colored students for actions that they did not do. The videos that were shown in the meeting talk about how what you say can be construed as racist. If we are teaching this to our children, that will only make them fearful to interact with people of other races and nationalities, further driving a wedge between all of us, proof. My son has already expressed to us that he's become more reluctant to speak to some students as he's afraid that he may say something that is deemed inappropriate. If we follow that path further, it will lead to an unintentional segregation of the students as one group will not talk to another for fear of being labeled racist, proof. Mr. Flowers said that he's visiting the schools, different schools of the district to meet with the students. He mentioned how he was pointing out the differences between the students. Wouldn't it be more beneficial to show the students how they are alike? We should teach our children that all people are the same as us, and hopefully, we will no longer see the differences. Thank you.
How you doing? I'm just going to add a title here, "Infiltration from Women." We're divided by so many things, what do you advise us? Think about it. Competitions, mainstream media, celebrities, entertainers, pop stars, and many other false idols. Why do they want us divided by religion, race, sex, gender, cultural, race, gender, and class? Why do they want us fighting for each other and divided? When we are angry, afraid, weakened, censored, we are easier to control and manipulate. Who controls the leaders that divide us by deceiving us with lies, fear, and propaganda? People who just want to live their life and be left alone. But the powers that be, who make up a very small percentage of the world, continue to hold on to that control that they are losing very rapidly due to the population around the world waking up their mantra of schemes and crimes. When you are awake, you stand outside the stable, group, thing, collective, with free thought. Free thought is a viewpoint that holds suppositions regarding truth should be formed on the basis of logic, tradition, revelation, or dogma. Unity is what gives people strength. Unity is what gives people power collectively. Unity is humanity, and humanity is currently being changed at a very rapid rate. Power over our government, power over the media, power over institutions, which the people have. The world is what we make of it, but we continue to let programs, curriculums, mandates segregate us and ruin our relationships, which is drastically hurting our children's future. They have already set back two years with the virus. That should have never happened in the first place, but while we are distracted, we let our guard down and forget to uphold our values and morals of the country. How can we stop the madness after we have come so far? After being hit with this upside-down world control? Think about it, civil rights, equality, women's rights are being thrown out the window, halted, reversed, and we're being put into pigeonholes that we are, and no one's noticing this, but this is all by design, understand? We must understand our children are suffering. We have been infiltrated by our enemies instead of being hated as a country, and it does not matter by whom, it is happening now. Our schools, corporations, financial institutions, media, churches, military, health sector, social media platforms, and the rest. I'm asking you to take a look at the programs, the surveys, which are insane, roundtables that are being sent to our children and to parents, and in most cases, these tools are not helping them and are further dividing. Proof is in the pudding here today. Stop and think after hearing what I said, and imagine if you, we, are all being used as puppets by our enemies to destroy America as we know it, and understand there's still time to fix all this, but we have to start now and rid our schools of this toxic agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all for coming out tonight. That's all. Can I get a motion to adjourn? In a second?
I got it.
Okay. Thank you, have a good night. We're adjourned.